All right, it is 5:00 PM and the city council has a quorum present in the work session room. It is Monday, March 10th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. It's authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. This meeting may be convened in the closed executive session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item herein. The city of Rowlett reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or re-line a work session. We'll call the director of session room over to do business at any time prior to adjournment. Your in-person comments, registration forms, instructions are available on the table outside the door of the City Hall conference room. We'll start off with item two, citizens' input. Do we have any comment from the public today? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, our work session. This probably should say 3A and 3B, but it says 4A and 4B, so we're going to call it like it is. Item 4A, conduct interviews of board applicants, and we do have an interview order, and we'll start with Mr. Carter Holston. Carter, if you want to step on up, we'll take it off late about 10 minutes for each interview slot. Of course, we are recording, as we mentioned, so be aware of that. If you could start off with, just tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivates you to serve on the Board of Adjustments?
Sure. Resident Rowlett for four years. I recently attended the Rowlett Citizens Academy and was able to see the various departments. I served with Christoph on the Golf Board, on the HLA Board for R B. I'm also the chairman of the Dallas County Workforce Board, which is a 28-member board, $200 million budget for Dallas County. So first of all, I have a sort of belief that you should move around and you should not stay stagnant in one area. And so I've served on the Golf Board about six years now, and I can tell you the color of the grass and the trees and stuff like that. So I like to move on and see a little bit more about the city. And I have a real desire to see our codes and the look of the city consistent, just like we do in the HLA Board. I think that's something that we can work on in Rowlett is have consistency. And being a member of this board might give an opportunity to do that.
So to, I just want to be sure you are applying for the board. You think you're applying.
Yeah.
Not the Rico Rowlett Board.
Right.
Okay. All right. Just want to be real clear. This board is going to be, I think, quite a bit less active than the Golf Board, leading on a less frequent basis. You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Counselor, questions? I don't want to now waste the time.
So what do you see as the purpose or mission of the Board of Adjustment?
Well, I think it's a safety net for those that don't fit in compliance with ordinances, and it's a way to find a way forward. I'm curious as to how often that those variances are given and how often those variances result in change in code, but I think it's sort of a safety net for citizens.
So you would, you don't look at it as, we've had some folks in the past who've said, that's what the code is, so I'm not going to say it's okay to do that, but that's kind of what the Board of Adjustment is for, is when the code is that, you say you can do that anyway. So you understand it.
Yeah, I think, you know, in management, it's sort of a lost affair. You can't figure it out sometimes, and sometimes you have to stand on your ground. So I don't think everything is black and white, but I do think that as you make variances, you have to think long-term, what's the, what is the person behind them doing? What is the person behind them doing? So you've got to consider all of that.
What would be some criteria you would use to decide, and I know each case is going to be different, but, but just off the top of your head, what might cause you to grant a variance?
I think, you know, we're pretty much a bedroom community. I think we're, in many cases, cookie cutter. We have developments, and there's causes and balances, and we develop or follow those, and they deliver the, I mean.
It's already.
Their product. But I think there are some grandfather or older areas that have, might have some land to catch, maybe, might have some set-offs that might be different, might not have a sidewalk in front. Those kinds of things, I think there's a fair amount of that in Rowlett that needs, you know, consideration.
So a situation that's out of the ordinary would require a solution.
That's.
Sure. So when you say consideration, that you're saying, you'll bring some flexibility to your thinking for looking at it, and I was glad to hear that, you know, you're not just like a black and white. And some of the stuff is, yeah, black and white, but sometimes there's situations, extenuating circumstances or whatever, that kind of fall in the gray area, so you're, you're willing to kind of look at that from a holistic perspective and not just, well, this is what the code says, and you can't do anything about it.
Yeah, you know, I found in my career, the people that I bumped up against the most were the no and can'ts, and I call them the first cousins. When we hear that no and can't, especially from city government, doesn't sound, but sometimes you have to, of course.
Oh, no, absolutely.
But I think having flexibility and ability to reason and go, look, this guy's been here 57 years, it hasn't been a problem, there's not going to be another one of these, let's look at it. So, you know, I think flexibility is key in all of our roles.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that because, you know, I think you need someone to get a look at things from that perspective, you know, okay, it's been here for X many years, closing issues, probably going to be one of them one-off things, you can apply some flexibility to it, so appreciate it.
Cool. How are you?
Hey, how you doing? Sorry to delay everybody.
Well, I'm glad you told me it wasn't 5:30. I apologize to all, and I'm so sorry.
What's the matter? The clock was wrong?
Yeah. I'm just warming up.
So what other questions do we have for Carter? That can't be all.
No, that's fine with me.
So Carter, you currently serve on Housing Finance Corporation. I assume that's a capacity of where you would want to continue. You're just looking to change around as far as city board commissioners go?
Yeah, that's a good example of a board that I had no idea what it was, and we've had to do some, some pretty deep work in there, and it called for some flexibility, it caused some reasonableness, it caused for us to contemplate what was best for the city, and I think that's the lens that we all have to look at, is what's best for our city, both today, and sometimes, you know, I had a council member once told me that, he goes, 50% of the audience are going to like me because I'm going to vote now, sometimes, and it's not personal, it's just, that's the way it is. But I certainly think that trying to find solutions is what we're all about, that's what your task with us, as our council, is to find solutions to budget issues, a host of issues. But yeah, I think the Housing Finance Corporation and a high opening experience, one that I'm pretty proud of what we've accomplished. I say the same thing with the Golf Board, we inherited something or something turned into what it wasn't supposed to be, and we protected the city, and we let the city know that this is out of compliance, you guys stepped in, it's much better. So that's the kind of stuff I like to be a part of. I really don't like my name just on something and don't do anything. As you know, Geraldson.
Yeah.
I'm a doer.
Which I very much appreciate. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Holston?
Just, did y'all, I hope you did, everybody did look at sort of his history, I think y'all did, that the Dallas Workforce Commission, I mean, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Carter for, I'm too bored for both of them, they are just seeing off the Golf Board. I actually recruited him to apply for this board, I think an awful lot of them, all my interactions with him, just absolute critical thinker, really, really understand a job like this, and this is, of the boards that we have, this is probably the most complex, but probably, so I think it's important to really have somebody that has those, you know, those really critical thinking skills, kind of that broad, that broad background, so, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to sit here in an interview and endorse somebody, but I highly endorse Carter, and I invited, he stood up to, at least, you know, stood his name in the hat, he's the kind of people, he's the kind of people we need in this city as we go forward, and I call it, again, building the bench, getting new people involved, and so I just, thank you for, thank you for, for putting your name out.
Thank you, Mark. I should also say that I spent 25 years at NEC, a Japanese technology company in Irving, and so like most people, I traveled to Irving every day, and I found myself involved in Irving, and I was the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and I served with committees with the city manager, with the school board, so I did all my investments, community investments in Irving, because that's where I worked, and last April, I retired, and so I find myself now wanting to focus on Rowlett and help here, so that's why, you may not have heard of me or seen me, I wasn't in prison or anything like that. So I had a lot of the experience in the city of Irving, and I like to take some of those best practices and talk to the councilor, shoot, hey, we, we had this problem, we did this, you know, code enforcement was a great example in Irving, where they moved it under the police department to give it some strength, and suddenly you see some changes in Irving, you just don't see the crime that you see in some of the other communities, because they made a real straight focus on code enforcement, and they started there. So those kind of things are, I have some experience with and look forward to being used in the way I can.
Counselor, she makes a good point. I don't know either whether it's the most complex of the boards, but the Board of Adjustment has the most power of any of our city boards, because unlike even P and Z, which gets more of the attention sometimes, they're still just recommending to the council, whereas Board of Adjustment makes the decision and can't even appeal those decisions to the council, so.
The final circuit.
Yeah, it's a big responsibility, so appreciate you wanting to take that on.
You can actually sue them to overturn this decision if you want, just, you know, oh, it's not really there.
It's not.
Yeah, well, right, they can take it to court, but they can't appeal to the council.
Well, maybe we should talk some more. The housing finance corporation was pretty darn complex. We got a baptism by fire on that, so, but it's all come out well, and I think that that's what you do, you give all the, you find things and discover things, and look at things differently. I think that I applaud the city manager and the staff that he brought in to look at things differently than the way it's been looked at for 40 years.
Carter, do you have any questions for us?
Just to, how often are variances granted, and that's just a general state question, it does have to have a percentage, and then what does success look like for a board member? What would be a successful tenure on this, this board? How would I measure that?
Gosh, I don't know that I have an answer on how often variances are granted. I would probably say someone near to 50/50.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I don't know that much. I don't know. Actually, the percentage of approval was fairly high.
Is it?
No, I would think it was.
Yes, I can't, I can't get it.
I can tell you, I can tell you back in the early 2000s, it was probably 30% approval for, I mean, of disapproval.
Thirty percent.
We accepted, we accepted most variants.
Okay. That's my impression of the current.
Yeah.
As far as your second question, I think success is someone willing to invest the time to get to know what's going on when, when an item comes before the board, to invest the time to research the issue, go back and look at the historical, if there's videos of when that item was previously considered, or if there's packets that go along with that, just any information that's associated with it, to really invest the time to understand the issue so that you're well informed when you come to the meeting and are ready to speak and consider the item. To me, that's what success is on BOA. We're right now only looking for alternate positions on the BOA, so that's worth noting as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Well, okay.
And alternates do, are able to take part in all the discussion, everything, just don't vote.
Okay.
But you don't just sit in the audience and do nothing, you can be part of it.
Unless there was a problem in the board.
That's right.
Right, unless you're actually sitting there, sitting in for regular.
There's the, any other questions?
That's it for me.
Okay, we'll be discussing appointments later this evening and make a decision, and the city secretary will be reaching out.
All right. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
I don't want to hear blow the trumpets, I'm locked in.
Thanks, cover. All right, our next interviewee is Jerry Galloway. Mr. Galloway, thank you for being here early, appreciate it. Obviously, this is an open meeting, we are recording as well, it'll be posted on our YouTube in the next few days. So we've already, you know, gotten the packet here, we've reviewed your application. If you would, start off by telling us a little bit about yourself and what is your motivation for serving on the Board of Adjustment?
I'm a CPA, I was turned public accounting in audit, most of my career has been tax, and I've served probably half my career as a controller for a couple of different companies. I've lived in Rowlett, he beat me by a year, I've lived in Rowlett 49 years, I come up April 1st, I'm 49 years. I love Rowlett, I'm somewhat, not disappointed is not the word, I worry about our focus was to be blunt, and I want to be involved and make that, give input on what I think that's going to be. Doesn't mean I'm going to, just like you said, I'm not going to get in my way every time, but it's not. I retired about two years ago, I sold my candle practice. I still kept a handful, about nearly 25 small clients, and I had my one, my biggest client is a Michigan, Indiana company, and I used to go up there every month, and now I don't travel to there near as far, it's all done remotely. So I was on the Board of Adjustments, I think, I think my years are correct, 2006 to 2012, served as chairman, I don't remember, maybe a year, maybe a year and a half, something like that. I followed Larry Beppen as chairman of the Board of Adjustments, and I'll, since you haven't asked it, but I'll talk to you about how I view variances. My intonation is to grant them all, if I can, in my mind justify it, so I'm leaning towards granting a variance, and I'll give you a couple of examples where I didn't, where we didn't as a board, that, I don't know what the name of the neighborhood is, but it's west of Toler Bay, it was a, it was built in a different time, it was probably built in the early 2000s, farms on board, and there were some odd-shaped lot, real odd-shaped lots, and one of them was a really peculiar lot, and they came in and wanted a variance on building their house, some of the rules on their house, and I started off, yeah, we ought to give them that, because that is really a hard lot, there were some things about setbacks and other things, they wanted variance and all that, but I asked the question, did you, the architect was with the homeowner, I said, did you do anything, because they had plans drawn up, and then they want to drop those plans on that lot, did you do anything to change the drawings to fit the lot? And their answer was no, they made no attempt. So we kind of talked, we, we kind of all went different directions, but we finally came together and said, they made no attempt on their end to make it work, and I'm going, if you'd have told me you tried it and couldn't make the drawings work, okay, I'm leaving. One time we turned down staff, that old Albertson's at 66 and Rowlett Road, when that was being repurchased and they were won, we had, we had designated turn lanes, I think, in that area of the city, or maybe, maybe on 66, and staff had recommended, they wanted the variance to take away the, not to require them to have the turn lanes, and I get the turn lanes, and I see how important they are to traffic moving, but I didn't, in my judgment, and the board's judgment, we didn't think that that was an existing building, just because a new tenant was coming in, we didn't see why we would make them do that, so we kind of went against staff and said, let's not, let's not require that again. City wants to do it, city can do it. I, kind of what you said, I'm semi-retired now, I'm pretty much retired, I'll be busy these first three and a half months of the year, and then I really won't be that busy for the rest of the year, but I even then, even when I work full-time, not every time, but I would usually go, literally go drive and look at the properties, just to, because pictures just don't give you a feel for what you're dealing with, and so I think that looking ahead, you can't always do that, but I think that's one of the things I would add tonight. I think I'm, I'm an accountant, I'm, I'm a numbers guy, I'm structured, but I think I'm creative, I am creative, I'm a talented number with numbers, which is not typical, and I'm looking for solutions to problems, and I think I've been a pretty good problem solver in my career.
Great. Counsel, what questions do you have?
Well, first of all, thank you, thank you for applying, I appreciate hearing your kind of philosophy, you know, I'm, I'm predisposed to approve unless there is an issue there, and I think that's good for our citizens. Going back to what you made, you sent me a statement, I'm curious as to, you mentioned you had some concerns about the focus.
I'm not running, I'm not applying for any of that stuff.
No, you may, you may.
It's traffic, it's all traffic, and I don't, I'm.
I thought you had concerns about the focus of the board.
Yeah. I have concerns of the focus of the city, I'm pleased to hear the things about the city manager. Candidly, I would freeze all apart, I'm not opposed to apartments, you got to have apartments, I'm, I'm in favor of them, but, but to bring in multifamily when we can't even move across town with easy traffic, to me, the number one focus outside of police and fire is roads. We've got to, we've got to, I don't know what it takes, and we've got to send them to that City of Dallas doorstep, Kansas doorstep, we got to get middle, and I'm not lobbying for anything, but.
That's honest.
We have one road that's east-west access, that's reasonable road, and we got to figure out how to make that. That's not my, I'm not applying or running for that, but that's my concern in the city.
And just so you know, this council has not approved a, a single multifamily since this council.
I'm all for, I'm all for multifamily, I think there's a real place for it, but you don't dump all the people we dumped in the city. Tell me a major road change we have made in the city since we started this. When we started bringing in apartments at Bayside or whatever they're calling it now, we haven't done any major, I guess the intersection 66 and Dalrock, we made the net, I admire, but we, we got to fix our transit, and that's going to be hard because of how we sit, I get that, but I'd say until we get middle, we ought to have, we ought to hire staff to go sit down in the City of Dallas council office and watch for that variance, or is it, I don't know if it's City of Dallas, I assume it is, but if it's County of Dallas, let's do the same thing.
It's a joint effort.
Okay, love, so we have been loving it. Good for you, all right, so you answered my question.
So to answer your question about what roads have been completed, I would say the other side of Millard between Dalrock and just west of Chesa.
But east-west roads.
That's what I'm talking about, Millard.
Oh, yeah.
But, but the intent of that was to not leave any excuses when we came through.
Perfect, no, I agree with that, that's really, really well done, but we still have that bottleneck.
Sure, definitely. So let's, let's get back on the topic with your interview. What other questions, counsel, do you have after Mr. Galloway?
I just have a couple of points. Number one, you and I share the same birthday.
Really?
And we share the same hairstyle as well.
Well, this isn't a style, by the way, this is a course.
Well, I prefer to call it a style, it makes me feel like I have a choice in the matter, even though nature made a choice for me.
I bet not same years, though.
Yeah, no, no, you got a few on me. But, you know, my, my main question was on property rights, and, you know, with your philosophy, you already described, you know, I think you're, you skew more towards property rights as opposed to how you would look at variances and hardships and things, so that's helpful for me, that was probably what my question was, so you wanted to answer that, but.
Well, we set standards at the city because we want a certain field or our communities, but there's some pieces of property that are just hard to fit.
Once asked, just doesn't fit.
Yeah, that's true.
That's right. Be sure to tell Austin that every now and then, too.
Okay.
Second, second question I have is with regard to, did you have any more questions, counsel?
No, I'm good, thank you.
With regard to the types of things that you might be hearing, there's often going to be public comment, so you'll have people standing up in front of you that will be lobbying for or against a particular matter, where does that weigh in your decision-making process?
I was going to say none, but that's not true. It goes back to that, that western Toler Bay lot, if, or the, or the, I don't know who they were with the purchase of the Albertson building, I want to know that they really tried to fix that problem on their end rather than come to us for a variance.
So let's use a hypothetical, so let's say that Toler Bay lot, I think that may be University Park over there.
No, it's south, it's south University.
Okay, so nonetheless, that neighborhood, that's an oddly shaped lot, let's say there's a neighbor that has a house that has a pool in the backyard, right, and, and they're talking about a setback, and they have made that adjustment, they've already kind of tried to orient the house in such a way that it wouldn't not be, not be as obtrusive, but it's still going to be obtrusive, and so you've got a window looking right over these people's pools, right? So that neighbor now is there telling you, I don't want them looking, where does that weigh in your decision-making?
I think that you're pretty heavy arming for me.
Against?
If, if it's, I'm, I'm just brainstorming, but if it's intruding on the already occupied neighbor's privacy, I don't know, my, my off the top of the head answer is I'd probably take, take that into strong consideration.
Yeah, so that's the whole balance with the BOA, right, is, is where do you draw that line between it impacting someone else and the rights of that homeowner?
Yeah, because you can't just say I'm for property rights, because we're talking about different people who both have property rights.
That's right.
Trying to balance the property rights and surrounding people with the ones who are requesting variances, the hardest thing, I was on Board of Adjustment, too, the hardest thing about serving on that board, but I like that you've been on the board already, you know how it works, you understand the rules, you, you know how your process works, and I feel like you could, I'll ask you, do you feel like you could hit the ground running?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, too.
Any more questions, counsel? Mr. Galloway, do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
All right, well, you heard my spiel at the end of the last one, we will be discussing at the end of the meeting today, and the secretary will be inside, we appreciate you coming in. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, our next interview is with Mr. Chance Joe. Chance, take the hot seat.
Hello, hello.
Hello, y'all.
How you doing?
Yeah. I think you know everyone?
I know, I figured you were in the door, can't let you know me.
So, same, Dog and Funny Show, would you tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivates you to serve on the Board of Adjustment?
Sure, of course, well, like I said, most of you know me extensively the last two or three years, you know, I'm extremely very active within the community, within the city. I try to at least go to 99% of the, you know, the meetings, I listen to the work sessions, I try to involve myself, educate myself as much as possible, try to put myself in that seat if I was making that decision when I make the exact same decision. To me, this is a way to be able to give back to my community, and I want to do it in some type of civic duty way, you know, for, I did serve two terms, you know, as commissioner of the D E I, you know, because we are the, you know, the boards and commissions are the face of the city, and I think it's important that we show people that an everyday citizen can volunteer and be active in civic duty. I have a little bit different perspective than the last gentleman in the sense that I don't think it's actually the role of the B O A to set precedent. I, I do feel like that you have to look at the comprehensive plan of the city and the zoning's and the ordinances that are there, because there's a reason that they are there, but it is important to have a, a board to be able then to listen to citizens' input. When you asked earlier about this, I think it does weigh a huge factor, I'm going to listen to staff, I'm going to listen to maybe something that the P and Z talked about, I'm going to listen to something maybe the city council had maybe talked about on that particular issue, but I think it's important that you do listen to citizens' input, because again, this is a way for the average, everyday citizen to be able to come forward, and you can, we can't make a predetermined decision based on a comprehensive plan, based on the ordinances that are there without listening to the citizen, because we may hear something that we just didn't think of, that could shed light or a different way or a different way of looking at something, so that's very important. But I would just say top block that I'm automatically going to approve everything, I, I, I don't think it's the role of the B O A, so like I said, to be able to do that, you know, when the, you want to be fair, I'm the first person, I'm analytical, I actually do go to, I know this is crazy, I go to the city website where you can go on there and actually go on and click on the map and actually go and look, because anytime I see a sign on the side of the street with a QR code or something, ooh, I know what I'm going to do, I'm going to, of course, I'm not driving safely, take me a picture, but then I'm getting home and I'm, I'm pulling that out to see, you know, what type of business or something is going to be going there, you know, seeing if it fits with the strategic plan of the city, because again, I want to be the partner. Something I, and I should have put on there, it was kind of like the B O A, when I lived in Florida, I did run a sub mission over 1,000 acres, 500 homes, and I was on the subcommittee, we call it the appeals, the HLA had an appeals subcommittee where someone would come, and I was on that appeals committee, you know, where we had, you know, talked about fence height, pools, setbacks, things like, you had that weird block corner that, again, not all things, you know, you can't fit a square peg in a round hole and vice versa, so you have to take into account, just like the last gentleman, though, I do expect every who's coming in. so you have to take into account, just like the last gentleman, though, I do expect ever who's coming in front of us, though, that they have done their work, they've done their research, and they've tried to do everything within the means that fit within that ordinance to not have a variance or whatever it might be. But variances are important and sometimes necessary, but on that committee, that was things that we listened to as far as, you know, like I said, there was all sorts of things in our, so that subdivision, you couldn't convert your garage to a living room, you know, and then you'd be surprised what people do, they kept the garage door and they still converted it to a living room, you know, I've seen all sorts of things and stuff like that. Yeah, but it's important that you listen, I feel like, I think all of you know me well enough that I'm fair, I'm consistent, and that's what it's all about, is being fair and consistent and living, listening to all the facts from staff, City Council, P and Z, and whatever it might be, and this is to make a good decision for the city and its strategic plan or comprehensive plan for that space, and then also taking into account those situations where you have that gray area where you may need to make an adjustment for the property owner or a hardship, you know, whether it's the, you know, the last one that just came up, I'll look back the last six months videos of the VOA, you know, and some things that have come before y'all, again, came to the church with the trees and the thing that had, you know, where the trees were there and stuff like that. So, you know, you have to take into account those things and make a wise, fair decision, but again, I don't think it's a situation where you've set precedent because once you open this Pandora's box, you can't close it. So you always have to be fair and consistent in what you're doing and making sure you're not making a decision that may affect. You always, I'm always thinking two or three steps ahead, you know, what is it going to do for this property or whatever it might be? If we approve this, then the next situation, the next situation, and that's really what you have to think, is analytical, and think like a chessboard, one, two, three steps ahead, when you make this decision, how is it going to affect things in the future, like the next build or whatever it might be. So, again, those are just some things, again, I just want to be a part and give back the way I can, and I feel like this is a way that I can continue to be, you know, work and give back my civic duty and stuff.
Council questions?
Yeah, I thought Mr. Galloway, I liked that he told us that his default would be to grant the variances. So what I'm hearing from you, and I don't know if I'm interpreting it correctly, but it sounds as if your default would be to not grant the variance.
I would say it would lead to more to that. Again, I'm all about property rights and the owners, but again, I don't feel like the VOA is there just to top block approve every single variance that's brought before them, I think it's important to listen, now, it may be a situation where I vote for, you know, the next three variances or whatever. Yep, you can't, I can't make a decision without having the facts in front of me first, and that's important. But I, again, my first inclination is that you don't have that board there just to top block approve every single thing. Is there as a right for the citizens to be able to come forth and to listen to the facts and what's being brought, and then I'll make the best decision that's based on the city, the comprehensive plan, city staff, and if they have done, I'm one hundred percent with him, they need to do their due diligence first, and if there's things that are necessary, then yes, then we need to be able to do that and have those variances available to be able to fit those square pegs and that round hole and stuff like, you know, things like that.
I noticed that you said in your application that you were willing to serve on a different board. If, if you weren't selected for this board, because we have a lot of people who applied for this one, would you be interested in that one opening that we have on LeCoq Mallard?
Well, I didn't realize you had an opening on that as far as that goes, I know that that was brought to attention.
Yeah, that came up later, but, yeah.
Of course, I mean, you know, anything I can do to be a part and to give back is what I want to do. And like I said, I have a wide variety, you know, from running businesses, helping with small business and doing the, you know, negotiating contracts and seeing different things, and just being fair and consistent and having that analytical mind and listening to it and making the right decision, so, absolutely.
Let me qualify that, because that will be an ad hoc, if we're on run for a period of time.
Yeah, I think so, a few months or something like that, yeah.
But I just wanted to see if you would be interested.
All in your career.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't qualify quite yet for senior advisor.
I was just.
But, you know, a few more years.
Well, we did lower that age, so maybe.
Girls, yeah. Not quite yet, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. I haven't been able to get that free cup of coffee at McDonald's yet.
We all get there.
Yeah.
Well, that's the goal.
Well, the question I had, I know the deputy member of the commission already had an answer, about you're predisposed to maybe not approve versus the previous applicant, so.
We just all approach things from one default or another usually.
Exactly, and I certainly get your, I certainly get your concerns about setting precedents, and, you know, that has to be taken into consideration.
And that's also, I think it's just important to, I mean, could we throw out a little bunch of scenarios, absolutely. I don't think that's the right thing to do because it's just like, you have to have the real, true facts in front of you as far as that goes. I mean, I own property here, I have a home here, I actually tried to get my fence extended, but I'm a quarter lot, and it would, I couldn't extend it because the bottom stopped from the street, so, you know, I feel that pain as a property owner, and I'm like, well, are you kidding me? Or, you know, this, and the fence had to do this, and stuff like that, so, I didn't feel that regardless, but, you know, so I have, we all had experience as a property owner, we all do, you know, and seeing those things that a property owner has to go through. It's just, I wouldn't sit here, I don't think it's fair to sit here and say, because there are going to be those that bring things in front of the VOA that are just going to be trying to bring things in front of the VOA without doing the work just for trying to see if they can get it squeezed through. I don't think that's the way you should make a decision. I think you have to make an educated, wise decision and listen to the facts and take everything into account, and then make the right decision without just saying, you know, you know, we're going to change every ordinance, we're going to have a variance on every single way, you just have to take it case by case, and that's the way you actually should do it.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I'm in the under traffic today. But I know for a fact that no one at this, you know.
You absolutely do.
No, not yet, but I do understand that, yes, none of the City Council will, and I try to share that information as much as possible as people as I possibly can for us.
Next time on the agenda, we're going to indicate that this is not your own personal town hall, so I'm going to tear all your grievances.
I just, thanks for applying, Chance. I like, I like your approach, and not to contrast with anything else, but I do like that approach that one of my big concerns with VOA and has kind of been shown to be true is this idea of setting precedent. And I, if there's anything I worry about this board more than anything, it's that kind of, you know, kind of wild card that's out there where decisions get made that, yeah, it helps this one guy and maybe make you feel warm and fuzzy, but now you've opened up a whole can of worms. And I think it's really important that people who are on the board understand that, that these type of decisions are going to go way beyond just, you know, whether or not I can extend my fence, because if I can extend my fence, then everybody in the city can extend their fence. And I talk about it all the time, you know, these rules about intended consequences, and VOA more than probably most boards straddle that line. So, I know, you know, we were in Austin, what was it, two weeks ago, and I don't remember who said it, but, but it kind of resonated with me that the system is set up to say no, I mean, that's, that's the way the system is set up, it is set up to say no. Now, it doesn't, you can't say yes, but to your point, you know, you're talking about extraordinary circumstances and stuff that really needs to be vetted, so that really, that resonates with me, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, and it's, and, you know, talking about that, one of the questions that you are always asked is, you have, you have to, and I think that you guys, I'm more than anything, you have to take emotion out of the situation, because it's easy to get that warm and fuzzy, you know, whether it's a church, whether it's a business, whether it's a property owner, you have to, I'm a facts person, I'm all about facts, and, and taking into consideration what's best overall from an overall plan for that individual property owner, the city, and everything else. And it's hard to do that, but we have to take, you know, some of the emotion out of the equation to be able to make a good decision, and that's what it's all about, just making the good, right, educated decision, so.
Council, any other questions? Chance, any other questions for us?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll set you loose. City Secretary will be in touch, we'll discuss this evening.
Appreciate, thank you, Chance.
Thanks, please, Chance.
Alright, our next interview is with Kelvin Cozy, Mr. Cozy.
Thank you.
You heard all the questions?
Obviously, you had that advantage.
You kind of got the sneak, the sneak preview here, didn't you?
Well, I promise you, I have no predisposition for the Board of Adjustments, I've never been on the Board of Adjustments, just, I did work with the golf board for a short time, so, for a year, but.
Sure, so just, you know, start off, tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and specifically what motivates you to serve on this board?
Yes, I grew up in a military family, my father was a Army chaplain, Colonel retired, and then worked for the VA Center after that, and so we moved a little bit of everywhere, including Germany and several different states, and so that brought, gave us a lot of experience. We never developed any roots as children growing up, but, you know, it was just an experience that I wouldn't trade for anything. Our, my siblings and I are still close to this day in support and just, you know, caring for each other, and it's, that's been a real blessing. I want to give back to the city, well, let me tell you first, I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight, we built our home, okay, I've heard over in Garland, and then moved in January of ninety-nine, so we've been here for quite a while, and I've seen a lot of growth and development in the city. There's, you know, it's exciting to see, you know, new projects, new developments and new things going in, and new infrastructure in places. I was thrilled when they, you know, changed and opened that bridge up on Miller that takes us out here. So that's, there's a lot of real positives there that I like, and I am truly more of a, not really so much an analytical facts person as I am, I am more of a people person, I care, I do care deeply about people and, and, you know, the impact a board of adjustments would have on people. I don't have any particular bias, but I would definitely lean toward, you know, if it's not causing, you know, harm to the city or if it's a decision that y'all would probably make, I would want to, you know, make that same decision, especially if, you know, it caused grievance to the, to the person. I listened to a few of the meetings, one was July, I think, of last year, and after listening to that, I almost thought, no, I really, it's something I don't want to do. I think you had a different chairman, vice chairman, or maybe vice chairman at the time. I won't, and, but I listened to this latest one in January, and it really opened up to me that this is something I could participate in and maybe really give back, and that's really what I want to do, you know, I've lived here for a long time, I've been retired for about three years. I stay busy very much, I'm always, you know, I've got, we have to calendar everything, my wife and I, you know, out because there's just so much going on, which means I can do this because people that stay busy usually have, you know, are hoping to, to continue, you know, working and being productive. So I tend to go into meetings and group sessions when I was, when I went like the bank or the, you know, the, you know, retail establishment. I just, you know, I think the key is going into the positive, positive mental attitude and being open to request considerations, which is what I want to bring to the board, I think that we, I would want to, you know, weigh out, and I'm not going to say I'm going to lean toward people, but I'm going to be very conscientious of, you know, their grievance, or if there is grievance, I would definitely want to, you know, try to see what we can do to help them. I know that there's special situations, I, in January, they had the, I guess it was the Cornerstone Church, which was a more involved project, so I got to really view what would be involved with it, and the interaction between the people. And that was, that was interesting, it was pretty exciting just to kind of get in and get in the weeds, you know, see what their reasoning was and logic and everything, because when the girl first got up, she said, you know, this would be a financial hardship, and, you know, and then they came back and said, well, you cannot grant this if it's for financial reasons. And so I thought, that was interesting, you know, and it's just like, it continue, you know, it's a learning process, so, that. But what they had to do in the end was actually deny what they requested for the bushes and trees and everything, and how they wanted it planted, they had to look toward the future, they also had residents that had homes and wanted to know how they were going to build out on this property, and, and so they came to an agreement, I guess, or a compromise, and they said, we're going to turn this down today, but bring back a new proposal that we could all agree on, and I thought that made a lot of sense when they did that, so. I was, I was impressed with how they, you know, were able to come to that, and I'm sure that they'd proved probably what they brought back because it would be based on, you know, what was discussed in the meeting. I know there's a lot of, you know, personal ones that come through, too, you know, for their property and want to build on the deck or extend out or do like the fence, like the last gentleman said, and, you know, you just want to, you know, if it's not any detriment to the city, you just want to take care of those people and just, you know, make sure, but you do have to weigh out for the future, like was also said, because, you know, or the person living next door, if it's going to be more of a grievance to the person next door, you certainly don't want, you know, you have to really think about those cases, and I think each case you take on, it's an individual merit, it's an individual, you know, issue, and but I thought it interesting, though, in the Cornerstone case, just to get back to that, that when the girl said that, the pastor ended up getting up later, it made more, a little bit more of an emotional appeal, what it meant that it started in, you know, two thousand and nineteen, and then it was, you know, adjusted and, you know, back in twenty-two or something, so that, too, there's just sometimes a lot involved, and you have to weigh everything out. But I think you can come to a practical and sensible, common sense type of solution to everything. It's like a puzzle, you know, you just, you put it together and say, well, this makes sense, we need to do this, or we don't, you know. If it's something that I know that y'all wouldn't like, it went against the city or, you know, something that you all have declined or planning and zoning or something declined, and we've spoken with them, there's probably a good reason why you declined it, why you thought it was, you know, not the right thing to do, so we have to really weigh that in and say, you know, there's got to be special circumstance or consideration of why we would overturn something that y'all did, or planning and zoning, or any one of the groups, so. Anyway, that's kind of my message for, you know, what I'm doing, I just want to be able to give back and, and, you know, support the city and everything I can. I've watched, my wife's been on the library board, I think, for what, eight years now or something, or two.
Yeah.
We don't always agree necessarily, necessarily on our, you know, on things or our politics or anything, but we, you know, we see eye to eye a lot, and I watch what she's done, what she's given back, she was the chairman for, I guess, a couple of terms, two or three terms, and I was impressed with her work, so I'd like to be able to give back, too, and support y'all.
Well, we're very grateful for her work as well.
Oh, well, thank you.
I'm the liaison with the library.
Yes, right, yes.
And she certainly has given back and always is, is great, looks great insights, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, I think she worked on the charter and all that, too, and everything, it's just really, it's.
She did.
Yeah, yeah, and that's exciting when you can go even further than what you first thought possible, you know, and open up the bigger and better things with the city, so you never know.
Sure, maybe she'll run for City Council next year.
Probably not.
You're wise.
Yeah. Well, I really, I have a lot of respect for y'all, I know that, you know, this is a full-time position that y'all have. I think I've told Mike in the past, it's kind of a thankless job in a way, you know, because you're not, you're working, pouring your heart out, you want to do what's right for the city, at the same time, you're receiving not enough pay to even pay for your gas, you know. If I was there or here or off the menu, say, hey, first of all, we need to, you know, compensate.
Well, I look for you.
You do lots of emails, so.
Yeah.
Kelvin Cozy, I did say all the college friends, we walked the nature trail together, his house backs up to it, so, and I kind of whined to him. And given that you do care about people and are sensitive to that, and we talked about it, this. And, and given that you do care about people and are sensitive to, to that, and we talked about it, this does, can get very emotional, and you've got highly-charged people on both sides.
Sure.
And honestly, that, that's, for me, we've talked about the hardest part, is why I'm sure that you've given thought of that, you know, knowing that you're, you know, are, you know, I know how you are, you know, that you are a people person, and really want to do what's right by people, and sometimes you're not able to, are you able to reconcile that, do you think, or is that a, is that something?
Absolutely, yeah, I don't think there would be any issue, I think that it may be pretty close, that you're going to have to weigh in on one side or the other.
And what would be the determinant?
If you have a logical and sensible, common sense type of, you know, this works better for this individual, I understand your need or complaint, or, or, you know, but we need to do this for this person, or not.
Right, right.
Because it does, you know, be harmed to the other person, or whatever the situation is. There are companies that come in too, that want a lot.
Yeah.
And some of that really, you know, it's, you have to think of everything, the impact on the city and the roads, you know, people around. So, but I'd actually, you know, I don't think that'd be any problem.
Okay.
I've had some pretty serious issues in working around, it happened, you know, so, you know, somebody's not going to be very happy possibly, and that's just life, you know? You know, we do.
It's guaranteed, somebody.
I'm glad you asked that question, because I had, I had a similar question, and I'm just going to make a comment now, because I think you've answered the question really well, and you seem like someone who's very empathetic, and I think that would probably make it difficult in that position, where you're empathizing with both sides of a particular issue.
Right.
And to come down on one side or the other means you're going to disappoint someone else, and that's, you know, that's difficult. A lot of the people that apply for the Board of Adjustment are more, as you've heard, mathematical, methodical.
Right.
You know, logical, very, you know, logic-driven, very data-driven, and, and they can make a decision without a care in the world that somebody's walking away with their feelings turned sideways.
That's a good point.
It's difficult for someone who is more sociable, and has that kind of sociable connection with other people, and that empathy, so, I appreciate you answering that question, because that's a difficult one.
Yeah, well, you, you do make a good point, and I'm sure there could be situations that are pretty challenging, and you just, but I also can be logical and analytical at the same time, you know, especially when you've got a big case, and you've got to dissect parts, and put it together, and say, look, you know, this is kind of where we need to go, this is where I'm leading, you know?
Sure.
There's usually, you know, sometimes things are really close, and you just don't, you know, you could go, possibly go either way, and that's probably the hardest, but in the end, you know what's right, I just have that, sometimes I have to have a neighbor that got sense to, on where we should go. I served on a, one of the most best, best experiences of my life was serving on a jury. You know, we always tried to, well, what can we say, or what can we do, I don't really want to do this, but, but I actually did want to do it, and, and I was amazed that, that I was picked, and maybe for my demographic, I, I don't know, but it was, it was a tough case. They wanted that initial vote, and it was six to six.
Wow.
And, no, we, we were pretty deadlocked from the beginning, so what they thought would be an easy case, that we wrapped up in a day, it took the whole week, you know, of coming in every morning for like, you know, like you're going to work, and, but it was just a very unusual case. And it, it needed a lot of, like, thought and everything, and I don't think, it would have been extremely difficult, but they came back at the end and said, well, in the state of Texas, we are allowed to offer this, okay? And when they did that, it was a special, a solution based on the circumstances of the case, and the individual involvement, and everything. And that it was felony what happened, shots in the, and, and when they did that, you know, it gave us pause, it just, my mind kind of felt like, you know what, this person is somewhat mentally incapacitated to begin with, he was frightened, okay? There, there were just situations, especially, and we had people lying on both sides too, that were getting up and testifying, that up. And that made it challenging too, so all of us were really, you know, it was confusing, and some of us felt like, no, we need to do 10 or 20 years, and some people said, no, maybe you just need probation, not nothing. So this middle ground solution that they came up with was, it just made sense in this case, and I said, you know, we were still deadlocked, but I just, I tried to use everything I could to persuade people by this would be a good solution, looking at all the facts of the case, considering that people were actually, absolutely lying to us on the stand. They, well, not so much direct lies, but just really misleading and contradictory between the two sides of what actually happened. And so, that was, it was a great case, and I felt so proud, good to be part of that, and I felt I had an influence in that case too. I was trying to persuade, I was trying to, you know, let people see what was really going on, and weigh it out through those eyes, you know, objectively, this is what's really, what we're facing, and this makes sense, this middle ground solution, you know, for this individual. And so, I just, and in the end, that's what we ended up doing, and voted for them, and I think everybody wanted to get out of there by Friday anyway, so.
So prosecutor came in, he's like, why would you guys, you know, this was kind of an open and shut case.
Well, it really wasn't an open and shut case, but anyway, I didn't mean to.
No, it's okay, I appreciate your insight.
I think that was.
I'm a little jealous, because I've always wanted to serve on a jury, and I've never been afforded the opportunity. At the risk of saying that in public, man.
Because I was a law enforcement officer, they'll never pick me if they're running criminal charges.
Oh, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Cozy?
Not exactly questions, but I just want to say, since everyone else is commenting, that I like the fact that you bring that human factor, that empathy into the process, because like the mayor mentioned, most of the people on the Board of Adjustments are, they're analytical, they're numbers-oriented, very, you know, and as I alluded to earlier, some of them so much focused on, these are the rules, these are the facts, that they don't even understand that they're there in order to determine whether this is a case that merits maybe suspending those rules for a moment, or coming to some kind of a compromise. And I really like that you talk about finding solutions that work, solutions in the middle, that work for both sides, and then work to persuade the others to come around to that solution, so. Just want to say, I really appreciate that, I think, even though you haven't been on a Board of Adjustment before, I think that you would be a good addition to the board.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And you pretty much answered my questions as well, so I appreciate it, I appreciate you wanting to serve. You'll come back, I say, I guess after 26 years, you finally get some roots now?
Yes, sir, yeah, meeting, my, moved here in 86, and met my wife that summer of 86 on Blind Devil Days. Got married in May of the next year, and that's the first time I've been married, so I was just like, no. Anyway, and we've, you know, we've lived here for that 26 years, I sort of, never been happier.
I understand the military part, but it was me that was dragging my thing to the finish line.
Oh, was it really? Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was, man, it's an experience you wouldn't trade for anything, and, and I just appreciate it.
What questions do you have for us?
Wow, when is the lagoon opening?
That's a good one, that's a good one. You'll have to ask this guy.
That's not on the agenda.
That's right, I understand that.
Any other questions? Well, we do appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
We'll have a discussion here shortly, we have one more review conducted, and then we'll be making a decision tonight.
Excellent.
Well, thank you so much for your time, for interviewing me, and please go.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Much, good to see you.
Thank you too.
You bet, see you soon.
Take care, everyone. Let me see if Mr. Nappus here. Can we just have a seat there?
Sure.
Thank you for choosing to interview with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're obviously members of the city council, and here to interview for the Board of Adjustment. This is a public and open meeting, we are recording, just so you know. And if you could start off with, we obviously have your, your packet, your application here, but if you could start off with just by telling us a little bit about yourself, and what your motivation is to serve on the Board of Adjustment.
Sure, well, I'm Drew, Drew Napp, or Andrew, live, I'm, let's see, lived around since 2016, and recently, with my, with my life and my great day, so. I don't know, recently, I've just kind of gotten interested in joining, you know, local government, kind of getting involved with the city. Love around that, with my time in around that, and kind of just want to get more involved, and contribute to the city more, so, that's kind of why I'm applying.
Do you have a background that would be conducive to this type of responsibility? Have you, have you been online and watched meetings, and kind of got a feel for how everything flows?
So, a little bit, I will be honest, I don't have really an experience with zoning, or varicose, or anything like that. I had a pretty quick learner, I adapt quickly, you know, definitely eager to learn, I don't exactly have a full-on background in that. I'm in commercial, real estate, property management, so I know it's kind of similar. I have been online a little bit to watch some meetings, find it very interesting, but because I don't have the exact background, definitely will need to learn, need to learn.
Sure, sure. Counsel, questions?
What do you see as the purpose of the mission of the Board of Adjustment?
Sure, to advance or help roll around that, sorry, pardon, excuse me.
Okay.
To enhance the city, and help residents around that.
And help them now.
I'm sorry about it, thank you.
This is why I'm nervous, we don't like.
You're among friends.
It's all just what they're zoning, and their requests, and their mission, what they're trying to do.
Do you have any past volunteer experience on the other outside entities, boards, anything like that?
I do not.
Okay.
And more so recently, in the last couple of months, I was kind of just got interested in how local government works. Like I said, love around that, been here almost 10 years, I kind of just want to get involved, so, even if there wasn't with the Board of Adjustments, I just want to, you know, join something, you know, help enhance the environment, if you need it.
Sure, we definitely appreciate that. This, this city is what it is because of the volunteers that we have, and there's always a shortage, it seems, and then I'm always amazed at the outpouring also, so, what I would encourage you to do is to get involved in our City Academy, which is a class that we hold once a year, twice a year, how often do we do City Academy?
I think it's just once.
Somewhat frequently, if you're saying, I would encourage you to get involved in.
Just finished one of them.
Yeah, we did. It's, it's a great way to get involved and kind of see the inner workings of the city, you get to tour a lot of the facilities, and really get to understand municipal governance as a whole. The other thing I would encourage is, we make appointments to boards and commissions on an annual basis, and it always happens round about the fourth quarter of the year roughly, and the appointments take effect in January, so, when the fourth quarter rolls around this year, I would encourage you to reapply.
Okay.
Find, because we have, honestly, we have boards and commissions that fit kind of any passion that you might have, whether it's the golf advisory board, or if you're into arts, or if you're into parks, or golf, I mean, there's lots of different things out there that you can be a part of, and find something that is a good fit for you, that you're really passionate about. And then getting into that board will allow you to dip your toes in the water, kind of what goes on in the city, what it looks like in a public meeting, how things are run with Robert's rules, and just kind of a whole Pandora's box of, of city government, so to speak. And it gives you an opportunity then to be a representative of people that you know about that particular subject, and speak into it to the council. So all of those boards are, make recommendations to the council in each of those different areas, they tackle different tasks and objectives, and they have different missions, and it's just a great opportunity to volunteer and really play a part. Outside of that, there's a lot of other organizations, from our CERT program, Community Emergency Response Team, if you're into, you know, that type of thing, or we have an organization called Keeper All Beautiful, that tests themselves with, you know, cleaning things up, and hosting events, and they do things like birthday, and shredding, recycling day, and things like that, so there's loads of other outside organizations, Life Message is a food pantry here in town, and also operates a thrift store, great volunteer opportunity there, so, there's lots of ways to really help out and lean in, and get involved. You kind of chose a bad time, because right now, the only thing that we really had open was the Board of Adjustment, and then the Senior Advisory Board, which you certainly don't qualify for, so, we, we were kind of limited in scope in terms of what you could choose from right now, but we would love to see you back applying in the future.
Yeah, the thing is, the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Commission are sort of like the top-tier boards, so most people start with one of the other boards, get some experience on how boards work, and then go to those boards, because those boards deal with more technical, they're statutory boards that, that the state of Texas actually, we don't have a choice about having those boards, we have to have them.
True.
And they operate under stricter rules also, because those members are considered officers of the city, like we are, and not just advisory board members like on the other boards, so, yeah, it's a process, and like Jeff said, CERT is a really great way to get involved if you're at all interested in emergency services, it's a lot of fun too, and they do classes for that twice a year, and I think in February and August, so you might want to, you know, I really appreciate you coming in and wanting to get involved and be a new per, you know, because we want new people on these boards, for sure, and so, don't want you to be discouraged, because this one is technical, and we have a whole lot of applicants for it, so.
Understood. I, I appreciate your sign, definitely I'll look into that, because I definitely do want to get involved.
And I want to thank you for that, if there's one thing I think we all kind of get frustrated with, is, you know, we got a lot going on, and everybody wants to complain, and there aren't a lot of people that want to step up and say, hey, I want to be part of the solution, so don't forget about all the other opportunities, because it's important to have people like you, and we don't have enough of them, so absolutely, I mean, stay in touch. We'll find, we'll find something to do, we'll find something to do.
Do you go by Andrew or Drew?
Drew.
Drew, okay, well, again, just to reiterate, thanks so much for your interest, we need young guys like you to be involved, so, we want you to be involved, and I would personally invite you, a really easy way to see what's happening in the city is come to a city council meeting.
Oh, for sure.
We meet on the first and third Tuesdays in the room right next door, but if you really want to see the magic, come on to a work session on a Monday night, we're meeting this room.
Sometimes the fireworks.
Yeah. All sorts of stuff, in there, it's real formal, we have to vote, and it's real, it's real formal, but here, we just kind of, you know, somewhat formally, there's an agenda that's supposed to, we can only talk about the stuff that's on the agenda, so it doesn't go AWOL and go crazy, but it's a real good way just to kind of hear what's happening in the city, and what's coming down the pipeline. And so, anyway, love to, to come anytime you want, it's, the doors almost always open, if it's open, you can come in and grab a seat, and just kind of listen, and take some, that's a great way just to, again, just to see what's happening here in the city, because we need guys like you to be involved, and so, then you'll know the happenings, and when stuff's opening up, you'd be like, oh, that's my, now's my time to jump in.
Absolutely, definitely do that.
Yeah. So one board I'd like to mention, you mentioned you have a Great Dane, or Delta?
Yes, sir.
Great Dane. Councilman Reeves is actually our council liaison to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, and so the Animal Shelter Advisory Board might be a good opportunity if you love animals.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm definitely looking to that.
Yeah, so you have any questions for us that we can answer?
I don't think so, well, I appreciate all the feedback, and we were playing, we know about the other boards, I'll definitely, I'll definitely be.
Yeah, bring your wife, you can have a date, a cat sit at the table. I mean, we'll be very romantic, but we'll have something to talk about.
The lights were out.
You will definitely want to go have a drink after.
Yeah, it'll at least be, you know, food for conversation.
That's right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it.
Thanks so much, Drew, we appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, it was nice to meet you.
Talk to you later.
All right, Counsel, with that, that wraps up our interviews and board applicants, we'll move to item 4B, discuss appointments to various boards. I guess let's start with the BOA, so we do have two additional applications of individuals who did not interview with us. That makes it a little more difficult to, I think, consider those people, but they are both very long-term residents of the city, 30-year residents, so, I don't, I don't personally know either of these individuals, so I can't, I don't need their, I can't share any context.
Did they make the cutoff?
As far as getting their application, they did, we just, the city secretary wasn't able to get them to be scheduled.
Charles, I think it was Charles Denson, he never returned telephone call, and another one has. one has a pending situation going on.
Okay. So, remind me how many spots we're looking to fill?
Two.
Two alternates? Do we have that information? Just to confirm. Maybe it's on the website if we have an updated roster.
Oh, change that off.
This is indicating, if the website's correct, four vacancies.
I know. That's not right.
That's not right.
It's either two or three.
Yeah, we got.
Sorry, I was thinking we got to have two, but if it's three, I don't want to be better.
That'd be great. We have great applicants.
Not a great, we have two really good applicants. So.
So, Counsel, how about we take about a five-minute recess and reconvene at 6:15? That'd be, that'd be just a little bit of time to do a little bit of research and.
Great.
All right, Counsel, let's reconvene at 6:18 PM. And have we determined how many slots we have?
Four alternates for PNC.
And more alternates for B.
There you go.
Okay.
Well, I think that.
So, four alternates. We had five total interviews. I think probably the first four that we had would be appropriately qualified to fill those seats.
And an interesting mix of a little bit diverse kind of views, which I think kind of evens it out, which is good.
I really like that we were able to get one that says, I will lean toward, always approving the one that leaned toward. I would almost never approve. I think that's a, that's a good.
That's nice with the long meeting.
Yeah, I like it. I think it's a good mix, good candidates.
Okay. Well, good, I'm going to have four spots because I was, I knew, I was looking, I said, we're going to have some good candidates. I almost felt like that. I didn't leave anybody out. So, that's, that's a good.
All right. So, any objection to those four applicants?
Read them off again.
So, our four applicants will be Carter Holston, Jerry Galloway, Chance Joe, and Calvin Causing.
Yeah, great.
All right. With that in mind, we also need to discuss Senior Advisory Board applicants. And I'm hoping Councilmember Britton can guide us down that path.
Do we have the names of the ones that applied?
So, those are the ones in the pink.
Okay. That's hard to see the pink. That's okay. Yeah, we did interview all five. I only interviewed four, particularly, didn't interview one. And I think we settled, oh, let me find email. Let's over and talk a little bit longer on Board of Adjustments.
Sorry.
It's okay.
When we had four slots, it just made it too easy. There was no, no discussion.
Let me find the email.
So, how many openings do we have here? Three?
It's worth pointing out that we will now have an opening on the Golf Advisory Board. And Carter was a regular member, so.
Oh, he just.
So, what's being, what's being recommended for senior, for the alternates? Is Cynthia McMillan? Oz, now she goes by Ozzy, Carter, and Marilyn Jones-Johnson.
Ozzy, Cynthia, and Marilyn.
Cynthia McMillan, Oznell, Ozzy.
And they would all be alternate members, correct?
Huh?
All.
Yeah, that's all we had. Open as alternates, Cynthia.
Counsel, any objection to those three names? All right. So, those will be the names that we will see on a resolution to appoint or to appoint whichever warrant takes at our next meeting. Everybody okay with consent agenda on this item?
Yeah. About the golf board, so, I mean, we're, we can go out and advertise, look for another three and get that filled. We don't have to wait to fill this spot up here.
So, I'm kind of implying not to, only because it's only one seat. When we were looking at.
Is there an alternate?
Yeah, because we'd have to go through this whole process. Yeah.
I thought that alternate.
And we, and we got a full slate of alternates.
Oh, so you put an alternate.
That's what I was going to suggest. So, of, of the two alternates that are listed, Richard Ford and Gerald Young, do you have a preference on perhaps relocating one of those individuals to be a regular member?
Well, there's also, well, that's not accurate. Gerald is now a regular member, I believe. Richard, I believe, is also. We've got, we've got a new guy, Charles. Where's, where's the golf board?
Well, that shows Richard and Gerald as alternates.
That doesn't have everybody on there. And so, you've got, what's, what's Craig? What's Craig's last name?
Craig Ewer.
Yeah, Larry. Yeah, because we had, we had, we had a guy move. Al moved. Gerald took his place. We have a fellow named Craig, who's also an alternate. So, we have two alternates. That right? Yeah, sure, that's right. John Carter, Larry, Brad Carter, John Michael, Larry, Craig, Richard. Yeah, I still, I still think we have one, one alternate. No, two. We have Richard and Craig.
You have one open.
Yeah, that's not open. That we filled that. I don't know why that's not.
It's probably filled with Craig.
Craig, yeah.
Okay. So, you moved somebody.
Gerald moved into a regular position when Al left. I believe that's right. But doesn't match up the numbers up there. I could be wrong. If not, then we have three alternates, losing Carter. We just, we still have two, which I think is, but in all watches, now we're going to have two alternates. Those are the names I just. And we're good. We're good with that. We don't need, we need one or two.
But we would need to move somebody into the regular.
Well, I'm saying Gerald.
Oh, move Gerald.
Yeah, yeah. Gerald would definitely be who, who.
Gotcha. So, Richard.
Well, that's, I guess I would need to check, obviously, with the board. I don't want to, you know, lightly say that. But either one. Well, it's your appointment. It's the board's appointment.
Sure.
Yeah.
Although usually you do consult with the chair, please.
So.
It would be up to you. It's your role.
I'm looking at the packet from February 4. And it does show that Craig was appointed as an alternate.
Yes.
But it doesn't show any other changes. And this is dated February 21.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, because Al's name, so I guess Richard and Gerald are both still alternates. Craig is in that open spot. So, right now, we have three alternates. We will move either Richard or Gerald into Carter's spot. And then we'll still have two alternates.
So, can you work with the city secretary to get that name?
Yeah, you know, move it back. So, we officially put it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, Counsel. Any other discussion on board and commission appointments at this time? All right. Then we will adjourn at 6:25 PM. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.